Welcome to the November nights Rochester School District Business Meeting. We'll call the order. Neil?
Present.
Thomas?
Present.
Michael?
Present.
Jennifer?
Present.
Grant's here. How about flags, Louis?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the public for which chance one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thanks to our first opportunity for public to address the board and the waiting room.
There is no one in the waiting room.
When signed up here, it's great. We'll move on to the consent agenda. If we have a chance to. Consent agenda, any questions, comments on the consent agenda? If not, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Neil, so moved.
Thank you, Neil. Your second?
I'll take it.
Thank you, Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, proof. All right, let's move on to, so. Student representatives aren't quite there yet. We're hoping that Amy was going to be able to join us. It's a little. Little safer spot. She's able to get here. And move on to. ALA Annual Report. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Well, it's great to see you guys. I feel like, you know, with the job change, I don't ever really see you around. I see a few of you around, but it's great to be here again and. Going to give you two reports tonight. Just don't want you to give me twice.
Right, it's great.
So it's a little different than the past, you know, before we had three things we really want to talk about, but I had way too many slides. So if I get rambling, I have a slide deck to help me keep on track. So I'm ready, Justin. All right, so Hart changes here. We have, obviously, I'm new over there. Mr. Keith is our math support and he's new to Hart. And Miss Staden is our English teacher over there and she, this is her second time around. She was at Hart before. It was her. Request to go back to Hart for our time. So she's over there. So it's kind of nice to, for me being new to Hart, I can have a perspective of someone who's been through before the pandemic and how. Hart ran. And obviously Natalia is working on her second year and we have Jillian that's our intervention specialist, which is her second year. So that's our staff over at Hart.
Kevin?
Yes.
The intervention specials, is that like a behavioral health intervention system or academic intervention or?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah, whenever we need, we, we, she does a wide range of interventions.
Okay, thank you.
So really, this report needs to do with last year's numbers and I have some slides about last year, but this is a lot about this year, but I really wanted to. To look at the headcount. I know you had a chance to see this because it was sent out to you already, but you know, you can see last September, eight students and. In twenty-four in October for a headcount. And then this year, when. You'll see little, you know, we have the FT there on the bottom, but when you look at the headcount, we started. With a September of twenty-nine and we went, you know. To thirty-five, so we're really trending upward. I have my reasons why that is, but the next slide will kind of go into that. So my celebrations, we started school year with twenty-nine students. You know, being new for me, and I was fortunate enough that we have our reconnection conferences. I really think that played a key role in what we were doing at Hart because we were able to. Get everybody off our list and call them in and have those conferences. And we had thirty scheduled in August, twenty-nine people showed up on their scheduled time. And the thirtieth came out in the next week, but it was actually too late to claim. So we rolled with our twenty-nine. So we had a great turnout for that. So I think that's. Part of the reason uptake, I'm not sure how it was taken before, how they got students started in the year, but we went full. Barrel, we were able to reach a lot of families and they were eager to get back to school with no mask and things happening. They were, you know, it was really great turnout. And even though, you know, a few weeks later, we had our conferences, we still had a great turnout there because then we could. Talk about the first month of art. So. Some things that I wanted to go over some celebrations, you know, the welcome classroom environment and when I make some of these statements, I'm not saying it wasn't last year. These are things that I want to celebrate that I'm seeing this year and with, and so any of these points aren't any reflection of last year. I'm just like, what I'm seeing is this. The little things of matching furniture. So Sean and Justin, you know, when I was able to get the job in May, we started doing a lot of work last May. And that's one reason I think we had twenty-nine students is because of the work we put in beforehand. So just matching furniture, you go in there and the chairs match and the tables match. It's not like. A second thought. So tables repaired is on there. So. You know, it's coming out and the glue and they had tape on them and it looked like a school, looked like an afterthought. So just putting that. Effort in to make it look like two organized classrooms. And so the resource, you know, the next one organizing the classroom resources, just. Kids come to school, it looks like a classroom. It looks like a place they want to be. And one little small thing I didn't put on there is. Hot lunch in the morning. We had lunch, uh, we, uh, hot breakfast in the morning. We had, you know. Muffins and we have those things for kids, but just working with Sedex go to get hot food over there. And now they come and. And, you know, they still complain about food a little bit, but you know, they, they have hot food. So that's just one thing and it's. You'll see some other things that is to our advantage. We have small numbers. So those phone calls of calling people are manageable for people. So it's just not. It's just helps, you know, having only thirty people then. Connection to the students when we have a smaller population, you have. You know, connection with the more and family support. And that's, you know, the numbers where they're at is like just the feeling of the home. So obviously, Hart is aligned. And so now you're going to move into part of presentation of that you've seen over time of Hart is. You know, obviously we're there for provide opportunities for all kids. We're aligned with the mission statement of Rochester School District and we want. To hold them accountable. We want them to be there and made a system where they can be held accountable and have a. You know, an opportunity to learn. So we reach those goals by different ways and obviously we, I said, you've read them because we've sent them to you, but you know, really the class size I already talked about the. Students taking responsibility in their learning with the weekly meetings. The monthly twenty-day check-ins. There's just so much communication because we're our size and the support they can get with the two. Support people have there, not just the teaching, but interventions. And then we, or we as a group, we go with the PLCs. We have our own PLCs on Friday. On the high school and everybody's in the afternoon, but we meet in the morning because we don't have students that it's open for them to come for help, but we will go to one side and we'll do our own PLCs. And really talk about our students and where they're at and get them caught up that they're. And we're using curriculum as line to, you know, social standards and we're doing a humanities block this year. So real quick on that is a, we're doing. The civics and English together and Miss Staden is teaching that class and. I'm going to get in a long-winded presentation here, but so you see the picture, we have AM and PM. And in years past, a teacher would come in the morning and afternoon. So. I really want support for math and English in both. So they come at the end of the AM session, eat their lunch there and they start the PM session. So they can do humanities blocks of direct instruction for thirty-five minutes for AM and PM. So, so students, it doesn't matter. I mean, I'm not saying my math skills are up to speed, but you know, it's nice to have a math teacher there for both sessions. And that's something new that we've changed that helps support the English and the math. And then, you know, there's. There are one-on-one assistance because the size where I, you'll see, if you ever come over there, you'll see, you know, people have students' desks or students at teacher's desk trying to get that. Help. So there's a great time and obviously during the direct instruction, the other side, not every kid's in the direct instruction. So we have two different things going on there. Friday, I just was took Natalia and went to the workshop down in Vancouver and learned some great things. So you got to reconnect with somebody who runs. Walla and he's actually going to stop by tomorrow and give me some advice. My background, I did run an alternative school twelve years ago. Things have changed. I just want his advice on some things. Just to make sure we're doing everything we can and we've made this a great outcome for kids. So he's going to do that free of chart. This is somebody I've known in my past and he was there and I said, hey, you want to stop by Rochester? About Thursday. Awesome. So he's going to swing by, give us some feedback. He's been in. Whole bunch of audits before he's done audits and he's actually an auditor. So he'll, he'll help. If there's anything I need to work on because it's all new to me. Well, go ahead, yourself. And then Apex supports with the weekly progress and they will send us home. Parents can log in to get their progress, but we're doing. I do weekly intervention meetings with kids. So three goals that we really, we narrowed everything down. I'll back up a little bit in May when we're doing all the work to get Hart set up. Mike and Maggie did some surveys. So I kind of knew which direction to take Hart because I just didn't want to be the new guy and change all these things. But one thing we really want to look at is chronic absence. When you look at reduced by ten percent was really hard for me. I can't take last year's data. Because I have new kids. So I wanted to set a goal that we're looking at chronic attendance and now we're going to move that needle. And it's actually the chronic attendance is not as bad as I first thought. I think it will catch up to us, but we're always looking at it. And things we're doing is the humanities class I talked about, we're doing social motion lessons every week in that class too. That's not every day, but every week there's a component to that. So the kids are getting the support they need on the social motion and the attendance center. So we're. In the past, you might have heard Hart talk about. Credit parties in the semester, the big credit party and do that. I wanted something. Right here. So we're doing monthly attendance parties. If you get a. If three days, if you get a unit done, you get a ticket. If you come all week, you get a ticket. And then we have a drawing at the last day of the month and kind of making fun, bringing snacks and. Halloween fell on one of them. So they had a great time with that, but just trying to get, we're still doing credit parties, but wanting to get it out in front of them so they can see that and. Keep them involved. And it's nice when a kid, now they ask me for the tickets. They remind me of that before it was, I, oh, you were here all week, you know, but now they are recognizing that. It's important to be here for multiple reasons, but that's one thing. And then just here in intervention plans, you know, just. Really, that goes back to the absence to where they're at and progress is having to.
Do you, um, do you ask the students when they're absent? What was they, what were they absent for?
Yes.
And, and you see through if they're. Lying to you. That's better word.
They're chronic ones, yes.
Okay.
But the ones we've had a kind of a sick thing going through. So we were having, but they're, they're taking ownership and we're having parents. So, so, but you know. Student, you know, there's a few that. There's a chronic ones.
They're the chronic ones?
Yeah, that we're chasing and.
And I, I don't want to go too far into this, but do you kind of dig into that? If you have the ones that are chronic?
Oh.
Do you kind of peel back the onion a little bit and start asking? You know, a little bit more questions, you know, one question leads you to another. Could there be something else going on at home or?
Yeah, it's really nice because in my intake meeting, so the other advantage part going along, but the other advantage part is I sit down with every student and parent. And we sign a contract starting. So attendance is talked about in the beginning and those things. So they know my. They, we use remind. So everything's communicated through remind. So when we do get those hiccups of those, I can think of two right now that I'm working with families and yes, there's. There's lots of differences in things going on there, but yes, it was, but it's, it's kind of nice because it's set up because they see me face to face. In August, that last week of August, they're going to see me. And so we get to have those conversations. So it's just another relationship building piece too. Someone maybe saw me last year as assistant principal.
Or they probably saw you for other reasons.
All right, goal two. So you really want to keep kids on track. So it's. You know, we, we really talk about working on every class every day, you know? There's some kids saying, I'd learn better if I just do one, but then you just get farther and farther behind. So we're really set a goal that. You know, we're going to have majority of our kids ninety-five percent be on track. And so how we, that every twenty days, but also for that real quick is a progress evaluation there marked satisfactory, unsatisfactory. If they get three unsatisfactories, they are going to be enrolled for Hart. You know, there's some factors and I don't have very many on that list. So that's good. My third one is coming, but I do have a few on my list that we're, we'll be working. So with that. You know, obviously the, the activities we're doing is, you know, leadership courses, you know, you'll see our CT, you know, it's enrolled in my. First class is really driving some numbers, but just current interest. So one of my goals is to get. Data on where the kids are going. We all need that, but I really, it's easier when we have, I have the one-on-one conversation with them. So. That's going to drive the students that want to go to medical careers where they want to go. That will get that data. So I can get speakers and job visits and. Credit award. So we'll have that one-on-one conference with the students and check on the progress. I think I already covered those. So that was goal two. Goal three. The sense of belonging, school, the, in the school. So I did. Because I was going on, I. Grabbed some student feedback. So for goal three, for me to reach that. I took data that again, Mike and Maggie got, did some SMARTboard last year and we, we got some, we dug down, got some data. But again, I wanted, I needed new data. So I want to know how Hart was going. So off of this question from, this is from students feedback about goal three here. The question that I asked, what do you like about Hart? To give me feedback because that's how I grow, my staff grows. So in no particular order with no names. I'm, I'm not just a number. Hart helps me see myself work. I have a support network. Hart is my safe place. It's less stressful. And then asking my staff the same question about changes for the show, because again, I'm new, biggest change I've. This is a staff member talking, biggest change they've seen this year is when helping multiple students ask for guidance in their post-secondary career. The mere fact that our students are thinking beyond high school and have so many different opportunities and it's. A change from last year. So I think that shows just a one-on-one conversations about what, what do you want to do? Where are you going? This shows a little bit of how we are in big family. And then I think most everybody's new, but a few years ago, Hart really wanted their own. Yearbook. And so we're going to do a yearbook again. I, Michael was probably on the board. I don't know if Grant, you were there, but it was a. Before COVID, I mean, I know we got to talk about before and after COVID all these times, but anyway, with that being said, we're going to do our own yearbook. I haven't picked who I'm going with yet, but. I have some samples coming, but kids really wanted it and it's just a buy-in about who we are as hearts. Have that. So. Then. So just to come full circle about last year, we had ten graduates and I wanted to give you feedback that two of those graduates are in college, two are in the military and one is an apprenticeship program. And then a credit earned last year. So when I come and talk to you again at some point, you know, I really, I set goals for myself. So I'm always have to, and I think with the numbers we have, we're going to. We're tracking down at two forty-seven. I want to improve each year and earn credit. So that's just, I wanted to show you guys how many credits we earned last year and hopefully I'm not wrong when I'm standing in front of you next time. Say, hey, well, how about that two forty-seven? I, I, kids are working hard and there's some good things happening. So any questions about Hart? Thomas had one earlier, but any other questions? Sorry, I went a little longer than normal.
I have a couple of questions. It's been a bit since I've been in there.
Yeah.
But it just go back to Barb being in there and the teachers coming through and such, but you talk about the folks that are there. And I'm still envisioning this like portable. So can you just talk a little about what the capacity is? Like, are you in there all day long?
Oh, no. I go for my CT part, which is I leave about nine forty-five to twelve thirty. I go to high school and do my CT part.
Okay, but you have an office in that portable?
In a classroom.
You're in a classroom?
In the corner.
Then the teachers come in and out?
Yeah, well, so when I, when I'm leaving, usually it's like. Mr. Keith is coming, so he just takes my desk and he uses my desk.
Okay, okay.
And if I come back early, I sit at a table with the kids.
I saw those names at that. There's not room in there for like five offices for several.
I mean, so when I think typically what was Barb's side, Natalia and my desk are on the side, kind of where the.
Okay.
Oven is, and we have tables there and then other side there's the. Jillian's desk and then the teacher desk.
Okay, but you're in there a lot of the day. That's good. Thank you.
Seems like the numbers are up. The lower grades start, starting, I guess.
Yeah.
Typically, I guess in the past, we always see juniors, seniors.
Yeah.
Sophomores there in the last year or freshmen coming in.
Yeah.
Is that? Do you, are you transitioning any back to the high school or is it primarily when they?
Now we're sophomores. We had a few that were back to high school when they accepted a freshman right now. We wanted to move to high school. And there's just more opportunities as a freshman. There's so many opportunities at high school that, you know, if you want to go foreign language route, we struggle with that.
Right.
And so you have. In your classroom. Sophomores, juniors and seniors all.
Yep.
Mixed in?
Yep.
And how does that work out between the learning levels and?
Good, because it's really also computer-based, you know, it'd be like, you guys are working and we'd pop over. You know, Jennifer had a question, we'd be over there helping her. So it's, they're at their own pace.
Oh, okay, okay.
But there are some, there are some learning by each other. Like today I had heard Sue's asking about and learning off each other if they're on the same unit and stuff.
Okay. Kevin, what are you enjoying the most about your transition into this?
I like challenges and I, I really. You know, it's all fresh and so it's, it's refreshing and not refreshing, you know, because I have done an alternative school and I've been a CT director. And so it's, it's all new. It's might be old because I'm old, but it's, it's, it's fun. It's a challenge. I really, I like a challenge. And hearts, you know, there's a lot of changes that are happening.
How did you bring yourself back up to speed if you haven't done it in twelve years?
Um, well, which on the ALA part of it, just, you know, being an assistant principal, if I would have been out of education, I would have been totally different. I think just being in education.
Okay.
Being around it. And that other school, I actually, I, I started from the ground up. And so I was in the early stages of starting a school. So I kind of know the. All the pitfalls of trying to do it, but there's some reported issues, things that I have to learn, but. Things have changed. But it's fine. It's a. It is, it's all about the kids. And you know, I've got a, you know. You know, my third hat is being a coach. So that gave me that, you know, piece I've been missing too, just that interaction with kids. I get to deal with them in a positive way. Now that Hart, I didn't know Hart at that time, but you think about my job as assistant principal. Now I can be out there with kids and really enjoy coaching. Good. I'm sure the record will get better, but no one's right away, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Thing.
Yeah, please.
So I just want to thank Kevin. He's done a really nice job of putting a lot of new systems and structures in place. And I think it's important to note that. He's also put the structures in place to ensure we are going to be able to count our students, which is really important. And you heard him mention a number of those structures and systems. Tonight that he's really on top of and very aware of what's going on and all at the same time, we're taking care of that whole child. It's not about. You know, yes, attendance is important, but he's developing that importance within the, within the kids, which is so important and doing their work is important, but it's. About giving them purpose rather than it being because we said so. And because we don't want you to be unsat or, you know, so just think it's important to note that he's putting together some really strong systems. So thanks for your work, Kevin.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks for doing it.
I did for a second.
Get a drink of water, yeah.
Jump right in. Well, hi Kevin.
Yeah.
Okay, by the time you get here.
All right. So switching gears, so. This is a quick background, just the, you know, CT teacher years, like what's, you know, my passion was, you know. Hands-on learning, work-based projects for kids. And then before I became principal, I became principal, assistant principal. Now I'm back doing a CT director piece, which, you know, I was a CT director way back twelve years ago. So. Back of that. So. Obviously, there's some things in my presentation that I want to, because the board is kind of new and I know I'm taking over for Michael Jesky, did a great job. So this. This is just me steering the ship and, and doing some, I put my own touches on CT at Rochester here. So. There's some things in presentation I just want to go over and I won't go over each time I go over my presentation, but there's this, so much lingo and so much language and I just want you guys, so I don't. There's everything, whenever I go over something you don't quite understand, just ask because there's, sometimes I assume people know it and we move on and they don't. So obviously. CT provides opportunities for students to explore career opportunities, earn college. Credit, connect students with good paying entry level jobs. Relevant to real world, employee skills, leadership skills. And provide pathways, apprenticeships, industry standards and options for four-year college. So those are all things that it provides. On the next slide, you know, I put some goals together. I really, and this is not my goals, it's what our department is. So promote CT. To all stakeholders. So I think Thomas saw that I came to a chamber. And I, I think when the election's over, they'll have me back again because I think they've been busy with other things. Just connecting with the businesses, having that. Opportunity to be in Rochester where I'm at, where I grew up and to see the businesses. And so I really. Promoting, when I say all stakeholders, the community members, the students of our school, getting out to know what's going on. So a few ways that. I was able to do that and is through a newsletter, right? This is a paper version of it. It is electronic. It looks a lot better electronic, but I wanted to, this is October's. And I'm going to do. Yeah. So it will be a, a monthly newsletter that I'll do. This month is about done. I didn't, so this is October as you're seeing, but each month I'm going to spotlight a program. And then I say that, then November comes and I'm going to spotlight a student this first, this November. I had an opportunity to. Ask my CT teachers and I really thought it'd be great, update and spotlight a student. So. My next page, next month will be all about a student because this is, you'll see lots of pictures about people, kids doing things. So you, obviously. In my presentation later, you'll see about the gold medal and not that, that's old, that's not old because that's cool. I think it's not every day you get a. National. So I wanted to get pictures of them and obviously they had to raffle, FFA was raffling off that tractor. Then I had the CT in action. It's actually working at a football game, taking somebody, the FFA officers, the ASL clubs, this. Different kids doing different things. And then. It was, the pitcher was a district champion. It says FA state winners, but it was a district champ. And then. Our student that graduated last year asked her, that's an awesome thing that she's represented us at the national level. And then every month I'm going to put in upcoming events and just. Reminders about clubs and organizations that are Rochester law. Okay, that is. Not just the only way I'm promoting it, but when I get to the new marketing class, I'll, I'll give you a little sticker, but we can do stickers. We've. We made this our own. We had, this is a student made this. I mean, I, I put my kind of touches on it, but they took each program that we have at Rochester and I'll give you one here in a little bit. And what we offer. And we made t-shirts out of it. So I was really, so when I talk about. Promote CT on all stakeholders, students, because they need to know about opportunities that they have. All right. So some other goals, you know, explore little career opportunities. One thing you hear me, hear me talk about a lot is advisory. Follow advisory that I just had, and we'll all talk about it in my very last slide, but. Where we connect a lot of these different opportunities with industry. And getting those internships is getting out in the community. So. Earning industry certifications, we have classes that they get industry certification when they're done with high school. It's OSHA, you know, so if you take one of Michael's classes or. Mr. Cruz's class, you can get OSHA certification. So when you go on a job, you already have your OSHA satisfied for that employer. So that's. Those, that's just one of of the industry certifications. Link our post-secondary education to good paying jobs. That's what we're always after is trying to get the kids the best opportunity to be successful out there. You know, understand, you know, I think I skipped one real quick, increasing the passing rate. So we're not only, my heart hat now going to my CTE hat, all my teachers are looking at our passage rate of our CTs. Because we have our own mediums that we can talk about. Mr. Smith is giving me PLC time with my CTE teacher. So I can, we can dig down those things and I'll show you example of one of those that we came across. So um gain employability skills and then uh become leaders by participating, participating in skills competitions. I'm really wanting all my departments, my programs to have kids out participating in competitions. And then a program study, so you know, apprenticeship industry certifications. All right, next slide. So it's one of these, I'm going through each program. So FFA, so our ag program has a student organization. And the next slide will kind of talk about a student organization because I wanted to break that down. But these are the courses that are available for students. These are state-approved courses that we can claim CTE dollars on. And that we offer Rochester. So those are all under the umbrella of ag education. So the next slide, I wanted that little logo about FFA, I really wanted to go into something you'll hear people talk about. Is CTSO. So I really want to spell that out of this current technical student organization. So each program has their own student organization. That's where you'll see those pictures when you saw those pictures of kids doing things. And you'll see them coming up my program in my slide deck that, that's where they're doing it in their club. So uh some people call it clubs, but it's really underneath our CTSO. So the ones we offer Skills USA, that is actually sign languages under that. And um that's where we're doing all our work with our robotics. So there is through skills, let's say in our STEM work. And FFA, which Michael corrected me, corrected me for a while. But I always thought it was Future Farmers of America pretty long this time, but he educated me a while ago that it is nineteen eighty-nine, they changed that. A national FFA organization, it's not Future Farmers of America, but anyway, so you hear people refer to that, that's not that important, you need to know. But it's just my, Justin, Justin was nice and never corrected me when I'd say uh Future Farmers of America. And he, but now that I'm a CTE director, he sure make sure I do. So and then uh our business class, you know, future business leaders of America, that's been around for a long time. And in the mouthful there, the sports medicine, they need their own student um organization. That's their careers, technicals, sports medicine, medicine association. So. So that's rolls into right in FFA. And so I really want to show example of kids doing fun things. So the picture of the pumpkin on the student's head, that's not during class, that is after school, that's not. That is hard. I mean, you can say lots of different things about that picture, but we're talking about building relationships with students. We're talking about students feeling comfortable, students having fun. And so that's what one example is on a nineteen, they traveled. They're picking pumpkins and then they carve them and this is all after school. But I want to show that about FFA, what they're doing there. And then again, in June, they went back for a nationals trip. And um to those three students, so I want to show a picture of the three students again because not every day you go nationals. And then um because it was approved last year at late in the year, I believe, a new vertical milling machine. So I took a picture of that. Um, he's making little dice with it now. And I think at the end of my presentation, I am going to ask you guys, but if you ever want a tour, I love talking about this stuff. And there's multiple things that we have going on in high school. I know that Thomas is coming around to high school, but if anybody else wants to come and you want to call me. I I love, I love talking about this stuff. So please let me know. I'd love to take you around because that's just one of many machines I like to show. But back to new project management board. So as a teacher back in the day of a project-based class, it's really, it's really the million-dollar question. How do you get people down track? How do you do that? How, I mean, what processes many different ways? So when I talked about advisory, so advisory and I'll put the this pitch in at the very end. But advisory does a great job of getting industry people in to meet with us, students to meet with us. And it's all happens the same night and it happens three times during the year, Saturday, last one. One of the former students that is on advisory that works at a major company does a man, a project management board. And so he's, I mean, this is new. I mean, we had our meeting just two weeks ago and he's trying this out and he's going to tweak it as we go. He just bought two whiteboards, glued them to his wall and he's going to handwrite them for a little bit, but he's going to make a permit board once he works out all the bugs. So the, you know, the goal is so kids can see where they're going and where the project is going. On Fridays, instead of having, when we have those shortened class days, is really to drill down and did you meet your goals first? Here's your goals right in front of you. Did you, is your project on? Because sometimes the projects are together. So I teamed up with another student and I'm bringing Justin down. There's time as a team meeting to talk about, this is what we need to do next week to get back on track. So that's something new. I just, you know, again, I'm talking, but I wanted, I wanted to give an example of how advisory is right back to. Teachers of what we can do to make things great for students. So then we roll into health sciences, obviously to hire health courses and we offer all three of these as fall. We intro the medical careers and sports medicine. Health is always a full class because all freshmen rotate through there. So it's really full in a, in a, then we have a sports medicine that's happening. We have some pictures of that. You already saw in the, in the October handbook, but then you didn't see them doing their CPR uh on the right there. There's a little, but it's hands-on, a lot of great things going on. That's where, especially as a coach being out there seeing the kids working. Amy Anne really has kids doing the work instead of her doing the work for them, but you know, give them the skills to do the work and support.
Well, that was going to be my question for you. The students um before games and stuff like that, do they actually get to get in there? And learn how to tape ankles and?
They're actually taught that beforehand and then they take a checklist of things that they're okay, like, I don't know where that student in the middle is. But she could be on just wrists right now because it might have been early in the year, but then they roll right in the ankle. So yes, they progress through.
Okay. And then the, do they get a um an AHA certification for the CPR or?
Yep.
They do?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then so and then another part of program is that Amy Anne gets feedback from every coach. On how did this student work with your athletes? How does students work? So she's getting feedback multiple ways on the students, on their taking ability. Because best feedback is from the athletes that are getting tapes. All right, then we roll into, you know, we've had business, now we have some new classes. So we didn't, we're not offering all these, but these are the ones that we have approved through the state top offer here. So obviously, marketing and their business classes new with a new teacher this fall. And so we are going to be under the FBLA's student organization. And um next slide will show. The, in I think July you approved this purchase for me is the printer. So I really wanted you to see the size. So that, that student was fifty-four inches long. So it's almost five feet that way. That thing is about, the machine's about eight feet long. But it will do, that is a vinyl senior banner for that student. So she was able to do that in-house instead of going out and having a company do that. So she can do her own vinyl signs. She can do her own. Well, you can see vinyl signs, posters, stickers. You got one? So it is a sticker so you can peel off the back and it is a pretty good sticker. It'll stay. So one thing you'll see there is uh, this was the first run that we did with this particular one. So you'll see the edges are cut as well as the machine would have done. Because when we were printing them, we didn't have the cut in the right spot. So that was hand cut by me. I wanted to give you a present tonight. The machine can do. And now up close, you can see our different programs there. So starting at the top with the little person with the presentation, you know, that talks, you know, about the business classes. And then mechanical, then the sign language there you can see and then a medical one and a welder, then a robotic, then a little goat made it. And then so flowers of girl, you know, construction kind of. So just representing all our different areas. And then that's on t-shirts and we give those t-shirts out and just trying to back to my very first slide of promoting CTE. So another thing that uh Ms. Morse took on is. For me, you know, I can go to the chamber, I can go visit businesses, but she went out and free business in Lu, in Thurston County. That is in our area, not up in Olympia. They made pumpkins for them. So they, and they delivered them to the different person. It was awesome. The one that says um, the avenue one AE there. She was a brand new member on our advisory. So and Bridget knew she was coming, so she had that one done in advance. So she was able to give that one to her on the spot and she actually posts on her Facebook page and got a lot of love about it. But and and she, I don't know, my avenue she owns, she owns quite a few of them and she was, no one's ever given her a pumpkin. So she acted about that, maybe do that for her, but you can see some other ones. So there's um, I think the green one there is North Fork there in the middle there. And how that, that one came about, that was actually a kid, a student in Mrs. Miss Morse's class that saw the pumpkin and said. I'm done with my assignments, can I make one too? And they were all in. So it was kind of cool to see. And businesses, I think, appreciated it. But that's just some of them. I didn't want to, I think I'm going long already, so my slide deck would have been long. So anyways, there was a lot. So now we move on to STEM's uh skilled and technical sciences. And we offer those classes underneath that umbrella and Skills you'd like to say is our student organization. And obviously our nationals, I put that up one, one more time because it's a big deal, but I did put some other pictures in here. We uh this robotics, the hands-on piece worked it on the bench tops. And I'm not sure, have you guys had a tour of the robotics lab? Because.
Since we moved it.
I moved it a couple of years ago.
Didn't come to us a couple of times.
And it's in a, made a great spot. So it's. Maybe that's kids working on robotics. So advisory, I gave the plug earlier and again, Thomas saw me go to um the chamber. I still want to do that. But just getting those, and Bridget's, Ms. Morse's house, the scheming thing. So we are going to go out to those businesses rooms, support those businesses. And I think it's, it's important for the students to see that, how much we're supporting those local businesses. And so with advisory, you know, we met on the twenty-sixth, that's why I was in the last board meeting. But really what it's about is celebrating students. So it's a room of professionals with the teacher talking about industry changes. Because as a teacher, if I'm in my classroom for twenty years, do I know the latest and greatest industry standards? No, but that's why we get these people together and give us good ideas. So provide input on employability skills, evaluate our programs, which is a must we do. Right, support industry standards. Um, we have two more meetings this year and then. That's my plea. If you know of advisory members, I'm going to go back to chamber whenever it is, if they want me back. And I won't be long-winded like tonight, no, but I, I really want to, you know, show them the things that we're doing and get some more. So with that, I think my next slide is that, see, I tied that logo back into the head. So I could, any questions? I know you tried to ask us, I went and I went long, so sorry.
Great. Yeah, I got a couple of questions always. Um. I, it might be nice to know who's on your advisory board, not necessarily tonight, but so then if you think of somebody, maybe they're already on there, so knowing that. You know, Kevin, I was thinking about having four kids go through the district and always getting to graduation. And then having him in the past say, hey, raise your hand if you've gotten a certain certification, right? I don't know as a parent, having those kids go through, if I ever knew what the list of certifications that were available.
Industry standards, so yeah.
Yeah, in the district. So what's that? My kids weren't.
They weren't available for you.
Oh, they weren't available?
No.
Oh.
They weren't available for yours.
Okay. But if there are, if there isn't such a list available, that I think that might be something parents would want to know. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and that's a great, this is all fun stuff.
Okay, it's all right. I was long, you know, I was. I'm glad that the pencils weren't in here, then probably I'd be buying donuts at the next. God, I might know people in the audience, but.
I've got a couple for you. So and if you don't have the answer right now, just email it back to me and that'll be fun. So one of the things I did not have as a kid when at my alma mater, Murphy. Okay, so um was um, they're now available for kids. And I'm assuming it's probably in the junior year, senior year, something like that. They go into a program for shipbuilding, okay? Uh, and when I saw that, I was like, you gotta be kidding me. So in Alabama, in Mobile, where that's at, uh is put on by um a company called Huntington Ingles. Okay, and it's just probably kind of like um Newmarket, some, somewhere I'm going to use that way. And they, they get into that program. When they finish that program, they have certain certifications. That can push them in to do those high-paying jobs.
So that's real quick, Newmarket is starting that program as maritime, what's he calling that maritime? Yeah, so they, Newmarket right up the road is starting that program. So that is a good thing.
Okay, that's good. So so then here's that question. What about linemen? You know what, the lineman, fire lineman, they put up power lines and stuff like that. My, my wife's boss, her son, let's just say he's twenty-one. Okay, the guy's making over eighty-something thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I know, I know some people that just have some sons in there too.
Yep, he went to uh lineman school down in um Astoria, uh Astoria area. Let's just put it that way, Astoria area and got that certification. Now granted, he's young, he's single and he, he moves around. So but that would be something um that, you know, as an advisory, somebody can come in and say, hey, listen. If you want to get right out of high school, go to a trade school and make big money, okay? Here's something right here.
No, there, yeah, I know a lot of people that do that. Good avenue to go.
It is, it is. And we'll be getting with you. We, excuse me, we had to cancel our tour today of the, of the high school. So.
Middle school today.
Yeah, we, we got to reschedule and show.
Yeah, if I'm available, I'd like, because we have a couple of different things I want to show you guys. And again, I mean, I'm serious, if anybody wants, I love talking about it, just let me know, you can be.
And that's fine. We, what we might have to do is is um, um, we'll look at a certain area, then I might just have to come back. To spend more time with you because I have more time than she does. Okay.
And I know Mr. Jeski was really asked me a question about his vertical mill. He wanted, he has a little dice project they're doing. And so they were, they really want to show off to things.
And I want to see that machine because we purchased that, I think. Uh, I remember getting ordered.
Yep.
And saying that it was on its way here or something like that. I, that's, I can kind of remember that. That's what, something about that.
And what, to make it a little bit longer, but um there's another, there's a uh community member that is an ex machina. So is already hooked up with Mr. Jeski and actually has helped Mr. Jeski with a few tooling of his vertical machine. So.
Okay.
And he's a retired guy in the community.
Nothing better to do.
Yeah, he comes in and helps Michael out with that. So it's really.
That's good. It's nice. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
Maple bar.
Ham or bacon?
Both.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Um, so this slide showing us the, the orange is the existing fences that we have, the light blue is the new that we're adding. And if you're, you see, pick the buildings on that diagram, you can see how it secures all those quadrants. GMS, RPS and the biggest areas down. The, at the north of the picture, that light blue and the red, the two red gates between RPS. The one between RPS and GMS is already installed. Yeah, and then the one on the west side of uh GMS is installed. Um, the red gate at the end of the light blue for the. Um, the red gate at the end of the light blue for the maintenance shop, that's going to be the powered gate. It will probably be. Realistically, probably a month and a half, two months before those are in play, which actually kind of benefits us. It gives people a chance to get used to all those fences. It, it's.
Break in period.
Yeah, just because people are, it's all new, you know, especially when if you go in and you drive past the maintenance shop, it's like. They're used to just looking off in that field and now it's solid fence all the way along there. So people are realizing they can't go anywhere else now. Now, if you want, if you want to visit, if you're at high school, you want to visit R P S or G M S, you go back out and go around Carper Road. So, and people slowly adapting to that. Uh, they're currently working on the fence. Right there in front of the high school, they're putting the wire and everything up. So by the end of the week, that all that fence there will be done. They hope to be putting in gates next week and moving to the middle school. Yeah. So then when they go to the middle school, they'll be light blue sections and the red sections is what they will be doing. Not as extensive as the high school, but it, it's quadrants, the whole thing off. These are some of the pictures. This is, the far left picture is the high school. Uh, today they're putting the top rails on, getting the fence on. The middle section is where it connects to the corner of the high school. And the far right is the motorized gate that goes to the back of the high school. That's going to be the biggest. Eye opener for people. It'll give them a couple of months to realize there's a fence here. There's probably going to be a gate here, you know, and so they can slowly adapt their. How they ingress and egress to and from the school. Uh, this is the, the far left picture is the gate at the west side of G M S. Which has went quite smooth with all the cars that we have come in there every morning. There was one morning that. They were kind of panicking because the cars were parked and they. Were afraid the cars were close to the gate. We just had to explain them open the gates the other way. All the cars are lined up and they're like, oh, we got to open the gates this way. It's like, open them the other way. But that was the biggest hiccup and I'll take that because now it's cars still getting in there and. Moving through the program and not blacking up on James Road. So that's working good. The one on the right is the gate between R P S and G M S. People are slowly realizing that no more walk-through traffic. So that's good. If they're, if they cut from the high school, they better be going to R P S or G M S or there's no reason to go through there. So. The left picture is where the, are the new fence connects to the R P S fence. And then that goes all the way north to the high school, which is the picture in the middle. You can see how long a section of that fence is from that picture right there. Um, there is a twelve foot gate down there where the. Uh, fast pitch field, the future practice, practice fast pitch field is going to be. So we can still get in and out of there. Um, the picture on the right is the fence in front of the maintenance shop. That's the other motorized gate. That's going to be a can lever gate that goes across there. Those all will be motorized. We'll pull power from that swing arm game.
I think we have to note before we move forward that Ed has some real serious photography skills. That second with a center one there.
This, this one might be on the calendar.
Yeah.
And I was looking at the camera. Wow.
Yeah, that's an August calendar.
It is, yeah. Um, the one on the left is the fence that connects from. The picture on the right is the corner of the road. That's the start of that curve that you just seen, but. That, that far right picture goes straight to the corner of the football field. And the picture on the left is showing you the opening. There's a six foot opening there where. Cross country will be coming through there because there'll be access in the back bath and. And whatnot. And then this gate on the far right is where we have a lot of students that come from the high school, the TA and. R P S or G M S and that's, uh, will they be able to go through there and, and exit. Um, the middle picture, just another picture of that gate in the middle of the property. That will, um, stop people from when there's football practice and all that stuff. They will park in front of that gate. They will not be able to drive over. Shop put. And pole bowl or any of the, the track and field events that are out there, which has happened. People just look at it as a field and. Uh, that gate will prevent that. They can walk in there and set up their lawn chairs, but they won't be driving in there. So. That'll be next, you know, next year that that impact will hit a lot of people, but. They should, everybody should have plenty of time to warm them up to it by then. So. It's going on quite well. Like I said, next week they'll probably be moving to the middle school. Well, I have a, um. Concrete guy coming out on, we have the holiday Friday, so, uh, we'll be coming out and with everybody gone and schools closed. We'll be doing all the concrete cutting then. So the kids will be around. So we'll be cutting the roads for the conduits and the power and. Some other concrete jobs at the middle school.
Are you happy with the work that's doing?
These, these guys, these guys, they're a two man crew, but everybody always comments, boy, they're, they're always busy. I mean, in the rain, we got left league. They were just out there pounding away, you know, the lawn all day long, you know, I mean. And the, the high school, the, the section we're doing right now, putting that fence. And that knoll up there is quite the challenge because there are utilities and water pipes and main hydrant lines. Everywhere across that, that thing. We're out there for two days mapping it out with the mini blueprints we have and locating everything else. So. We successfully drilled all those holes and no mishap. So the only thing they found was. At one point they thought they hit a drain line, but it was just rolled up plastic from when they built the school in eighty-nine. It was very twenty, ten, twelve inches under the dirt. That was it. You know, construction debris. So. Yeah, that was a, that was a big win.
And you, you said something earlier about. Folks will be surprised they can't walk from the primary to the high school anymore or something. And so if Bubba wants to walk over to the high school, how does Bubba get to the?
No, Bubba, he, he can't. It's just that gate there is closed. If he wants to go from the R P S to G M S, they can from the back. Those, those gates are there and they have access. We have granted it. But if you want to walk from there, you're not going there unless you're holding somebody's hand that has the key.
You have to have the key to walk from the primary to the high school now.
You want to get to that back gate.
If you're not already fenced in.
Yeah.
If you're on the outside of the fence, like this picture here is what, the buses line up here to the right.
Yeah.
Right?
Maybe go back to the camps.
You can't walk. So what I will tell you is that the. We've had, because of the traffic at the high school, we, we've, we've had a few parents that park at, uh, the primary school. And have their high schoolers walk to the primary school. Those high schoolers can't do that anymore because they can't get out of the fenced area. So.
So they're parking at the primary, walking to the high schools, everything?
Yeah, that, yeah, because parents don't want to get in that, that, that fun traffic parking lot. So they, they walk down the service road now. It used to just be that barricade gate right here and they could, you know, you duck under it and you're out. Now it's got that fence there. It's, it's, it's locked, padlocked.
Yeah, that'll be a check.
There's mandates at G M S and like that and how we decide to have them open at, at what time of days is, there's the ability, but. If when we lock down, we lock down and nobody can go there. So.
Okay.
Yeah. And we changed, we had a vendor today that delivered to high school and. Uh, he got in his van, he drove past the maintenance shop. I'm like, where do you think you're going? They'll go over there and, and he was like. Where am I going? Back out and around Carper Road. He wanted to go to the elementary school to deliver the package, you know.
Maybe Google or Apple Maps will update their thing. Directions to get to the primary school is to go down the high school driveway and then down the service.
Exactly. The road where he was following. Yeah. And it took him back to the cafeteria. It's G M S. I'm like, no. But when we have that gate there, he won't have that access. Now, if. A teacher that comes and goes or a principal or a vendor or food service, they'll have a card for that gate. Not a problem. Yeah, we've already started telling teachers that are used to parking back here or parking in every areas, parking out in front. Well, they're slowly getting used to it. As they see the fence, it's becoming a reality. They're realizing that they can. The high school one will be the biggest one. That'll be the.
Yeah.
It's all different right there, you know?
And you're familiar with it for a reason, right? We'll have to readjust our, uh, Easter egg hunt. Uh, for next year, because the fire department uses that, that stretch of road.
Yeah.
To the gym.
Yeah.
That grass over there, they use that whole area for the Easter egg hunt. So we'll have to adjust fire on that and. Move it somewhere else or try to get, have somebody give us access to that because the parents park all up and down that road. There for the Easter egg hunt. So we'll have to come up with a different plan. For that.
Put the eggs in the woods.
Yeah, eggs in the woods and trails. That's fine. I'll make it more fun.
More challenging.
Any questions?
Yeah, it's great to see the progress. Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, it's a two man crew, but they just, they cruise right along, you know, they're, you go walk and look at it, there's no. They're, they're, it's straight as an arrow. I mean, they're, they make my pictures look really good.
You're making the work look good.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Did you get your flagpole fixed?
I did not, but I found out on vacation, my flag blew down. Somebody stopped and pulled it.
We did.
Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, it was, we were coming back from a call, having to go over the one-one and literally as I turned the corner, because we were in the engine. We turned the corner and looked at your flagpole and was like. And I slowly slammed on the brakes in the engine. It's like, hey, Ed's flag is, was all, I think it was already on the ground or something like that. And so my partner jumped out, folded it up real quick and. Put it somewhere on your porch.
Yeah.
You know, so, um. Yeah.
Yeah, the cable being loose excited.
It was, okay. Yeah, I never got out. I just saw it. He just ran out there real quick and. Picked it up. So. All right, are we business report first, Jill?
In, mine's really just a quick, quick update. What's uploaded for you are the year-end financial statements. Which, um, we plan on going further, deeper in depth in our December meetings. Um, but if you had any particular questions at this time, or if you were looking at it later and had any questions, just shoot me an email. But you're going to get a lot more information in December about these.
Yeah, I like sort of. The format's a little different, the fonts or. You make them look pretty for us, but the numbers looks.
So they've, it's been approved by E S D and is signed off on. So we're good to go.
The year-end report, correct?
Yes. So these are the final numbers, uh, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Of course, Kevin.
Transition to stuff out.
I haven't seen Kevin for a while.
Kevin, you did a nice job.
Quite thorough. We, we missed you too.
All right. So just a few things from, um, what's going around, on around the district. First of all, I did share with you the newsletter that's. Um, app the press right now or printers right now going to be printed and sent out. This is the community newsletter. So everybody in our district will be receiving it. And just to note, after Ed talked about the fences, we did do a big, um, article about the fences. So we're starting to communicate the why behind our fences. So. Uh, we know that there'll be questions. There'll be wonderings about why, but, um, we're going to hopefully. Get the news out there and explain that. We also celebrated our C T E programs and especially our, the, uh. Kids who went to nationals and won. So that's, we really hadn't done that yet with our community. So we wanted to make sure we got that out there, but. Um, you should be getting that in your mailboxes soon. Um, just looking. Uh, first at our students, um, I think it's important to note that first quarter ended on November second. So we are one-fourth of the year. Finished with the school year for our kids. Um, and prints are not principals, but teachers are finishing up report cards now and those will be heading out to families. Um, so that we're giving our parents some information about how the kids are doing so far. Um, also important to note that we had four kids that qualified for state this year. Two of them in swimming and two of them in cross country. Our cross country kids ran their cross country meet, their state cross country meet in Pasco. I think it was last weekend. Um, and you see there Morgan placed ninety-second with a time of eighteen minutes and eleven seconds and. Um, Tate, Teddy is, was in ninety-third place and eighteen thirteen. I think they ran together.
Yeah, it looks like they.
Yeah. Um, but. You know, what an exciting thing to run in that state cross country meet. That's a, a really exciting time. So it's neat to see the kids there and they did a nice job. Um, then, uh, we've got two girls that have qualified actually for three events. Um, Casey had qualified for the five hundred freestyle, five hundred yard freestyle and then the two hundred. And Morgan is going to be swimming the two hundred with her. Um, it's up and fed away. It starts, uh, on Friday. So, um, we'll have kids up there swimming, which is exciting. The girls are very excited about that. Yeah. Um, so you know, with it being the end of first quarter, we are seeing things. Um, you know, projects are coming to an end. We've got kids that are performing now and doing different things. On here you see, um, the, the two pictures on the left-hand side are the, uh. Uh, the middle school band. So you have eighth grade band up there in the top left and then the jazz band in the bottom left. There was two other bands that also performed, but they are ready and, you know, were, gave a, a great performance, which was exciting for them. Um, we've got kindergartners in the middle on the top there. They're working in their, um, math centers. And I was out in classrooms today and saw that happening. And, you know, you, I was in the kindergartners classrooms in the first weeks of school and they were teaching them how to be students. Right? How to sit in a chair, how to move from a chair to their circles and how to walk down a hall. That's not what's happening now. Those kids know. How to be a student in school. Some of them are still learning, but for the most part, they know how to be a student. And now they're. You know, you see them in a math center and here they're sitting and working on their own while their teachers are off doing something else. And they're literally doing math. So it's really exciting to see that growth and it, that growth happens real quickly. Um, the middle bottom picture there is our middle school students, um, with Mr. Meyer. He did a, um. An aerospace unit with the kids and they built, um, uh, air balloons. Or to put together air balloons and then launch those air balloons. So that's what those kids are doing there on a beautiful sunny day. Um, we've got a fourth grade class working on a, a reading or a, it was a writing project. And the whole classroom was really engaged. Um, yeah, up in the top there. They were very engaged in the work and excited about. Um, digging into the, the research that they were doing so that they could write. And then that bottom corner is. Um, the, uh, warrior week, the warrior week recess, the special recess that the warrior week students. Um, had at the primary school. And so they were all celebrating and you can't see it there, but they had their otter pops. At least I call them otter pops, but they all had it in their hands. So if you kind of see their hands up in the air, that's what they were celebrating. But like I said, the exciting thing is that, you know, it's, it's the end of the quarter and our kids are moving forward and they are doing projects and. Actually, you know, you see the learning that has taken place since the beginning of the year. There's a lot of work going on and kids are doing great things. And our teachers are enjoying learning too. So I only have a couple of pictures here, but you see, um, science of reading, our teachers, um, met. It was last Friday, they met again to do their science of reading stuff. They're holding the little prong, uh, brain prong that. Um, uh, Amy shared with you about when she reported two weeks ago. Um, just about the different parts of the brain and how it works in, in the reading, in reading. But, um, teachers, I mean, they're really enjoying that and. Um, Joey is doing an amazing job. I have not been able to see her yet, but from what I understand, she's doing an amazing job presenting that learning to teachers. Um, the top right is our teachers working on champs, which you heard from the assistant principals at the very beginning of the year about the foundations work. And champs is part of the program, um, to help teachers structure their classrooms and set expectations for students. Um, and that's our teachers learning some of the champs, champs protocol up there. Um, we're also working with teachers, um, last Friday, we had a district-wide act Friday and we're, we're teaching, um, reviewing with them. Uh, information about formative and summative assessments and talking about how we're going to be doing common formative assessments with our teachers. So that they can use the data to have good conversations in their P L Cs. And the other thing that's happening with our teachers is we have a team, um, that's working on dual language. And learning about doing the language programs and looking at which models are the most effective or we believe would be the most effective to implement in our district. And so, um, been meeting. Oh, I don't know, just over once a month, um, to talk about that and learn, learn about those, uh, different models. But we're taking a trip up north to look at some schools, uh, next Wednesday and we'll be spending some time in dual language schools. Um, so that's a little bit about what's happening with our students and our teachers. Uh, the next thing I wanted to give you just a update on is about communication. So we continue to look at how can we communicate with our families and make sure that we're doing it in an effective way. And one of the things we're going to be implementing is, um, a tool called Peachjar. Um, but what I, where I want to start is just. But what I, where I want to start is just reminding you about our current processes. So when we are communicating with families, especially when we have flyers or something to send home, we are sending it out through our students for the most part. Our elementary staff have to count the flyers out and deliver them to the teachers, so the teachers can put them in the backpack, so they make them home. Our secondary staff, they don't typically send flyers home with kids. They oftentimes will give them out during conference time. But more than likely, the kids aren't gonna take them home if we hand them to the kids. So it's tough to get them home with the secondary. We do put flyers in all of our offices so that they're there when we have information to share. And this information can be about, I had a flyer that I shared with principals about suicide prevention, and students who, it was a resource for families where they might need some support for their kids, all the way to signing up for a local soccer league, or attending, let's say, an activity night that one of our P T As are putting on. So all different types of activities are put out in flyers. So I would like for you just to listen to the next, that is short, I think it's a minute and thirteen seconds. You know, that will just give you a little idea of what Peachjar is, and I've got a second video that we'll watch as well, and then if you have questions, we can talk.
Laura, like you, she works at a school district that sends home paper flyers, approving and distributing those paper flyers is time consuming. On average, each school in Laura's district spends seven hundred and forty hours per year handling paper flyers. And then who knows if those flyers ever even make it home. But then Laura found Peachjar. Now she can approve and distribute digital flyers with a click of a button. First, we love it because they can upload and distribute their own flyers too. Peachjar even offers colorful flyer templates that you can customize and send to parents. Approved flyers are emailed to parents as an image and posted to each school's website. Parents can click to learn more or sign up for activities and events. Now, even those middle and high school parents are getting important school information too. Well, in Laura's district, now saves thirty six thousand dollars on fit and labor costs annually, not to mention nine trees. Just think of all the cool props you can do with that. Learn more about how Peachjar can improve communication while saving your district time and money.
So Peachjar is an organization that's been helping students with this communication of flyers and information for families. They do work to send the, send the flyers directly to the families. We share emails, and then we are going to be putting the information into a system. We control which flyers go out. It's not Peachjar at all. But it really does end up being a more efficient way to communicate with our families in that we can send them out. We can limit how long a flyer is there for a family to look at, or send it out again. We can make sure that the families, if they're checking their emails, it isn't about checking their emails, but they would have access to that to be able to see the flyers. Got one more, because one of the things that we're going to really be working with is our community partners. So Sweet Hall, Ruth, like we said, our boosters. Some of the organizations that right now, when we send flyers out, they have to bring the flyers into us. We had talked about this with Cabinet and Jill, works with a soccer league. And I guess it's a, it's soccer league? Yes, there we go, you soccer. And every time they have registration, she has to go out and print all of the flyers for the kids that she's gonna do. And how much do those flyers? Okay, there you go, all right.
And it's about four hundred dollars.
Four hundred dollars per season and the time that it takes to do all that. So been working to just, you know, look at this and see if it would be a good option. And not just for internally, because we think we can support and provide a lot of information to our families internally about things that we're doing, but then also our outside partners that we want to make sure our kids are aware of, so they know about resources that happen outside of our schools too. But this next video tells you a little bit more about how Peachjar works with the partners.
She's an after school program provider just like you. Amanda is constantly looking for new ways to effectively reach her audience of K to twelve parents. The marketing channels she's tried are either unaffordable, time consuming, ineffective, or all the above. It seems that no matter what she does, she continues to struggle with filling her programs. But then she found Peachjar, the leading digital flyer platform that thousands of schools nationwide use, to send home important information to parents regarding things like schedule changes, lunch menus, back to school night, and yearbook pictures. Program providers like the Y M C A, City Parks and Rec, and even five twenty nine college savings plans, also use Peachjar to send program information directly to parents through their child's school. All this information is delivered as colorful digital flyers that parents can easily access on the go, by checking their email inbox or by visiting their school's website. So here's how it all works. Program providers upload their digital flyer through Peachjar, and select the schools they wish to send to using Peachjar's interactive school finder tool, which makes it super easy to find and select schools than your flyer to, whether your organization serves families locally or nationally. You can search by school or district name, city, zip code, and school level. You can even zoom in and out of the map to change the radius of your search. Once you've submitted your digital flyer, the request immediately gets added to the school district or review. Once the flyer is approved by the school district, it automatically gets emailed to parents and posted online to each school's website. Super simple and painless. Peachjar also allows you to review each district's flyer approval guidelines to help you maximize your approval success, include multiple pages in your flyer at no additional cost. Add a learn more or sign up now button to increase parent engagement and track candidate performance with digital flyer metrics. Get started today at W W W dot Peachjar dot com.
I went online and I put it to.
So to be completely transparent, so the organizations, when they want to send something out to families, they do pay a fee to Peachjar. That fee is twenty five dollars per student per distribution. So for instance, the soccer team. Per school, sorry, not per student, sorry. So the soccer team would, would pay twenty five dollars for each school that they want to have a flyer sent out to. And then the flyer would be distributed through the email to all of the families in that school. As long as, as a district, we've approved that flyer. There are deals out there. I mean, they, they have packages that would take it down to twenty, twelve dollars and fifty cents per school. So it's really a, they, they want people to use this, this resource. It's not something that they want to have be financially prohibiting of any of the organizations. There is a free for free is what they call it for the community organizations. If there is an event that a community organization is using that does, is entirely free, they're not gonna be selling things. They're not gonna be trying to get you to buy something. They're not doing, you know, it's literally a free event. They would be allowed to have a free flyer go out to the community at no cost, only one a month for our free for frees. But at one a month, they could, you know, if there was an event at Sweet Hall that was entirely to support our kids, that could be put out there for free. Like I said, the community organizations, they would do, work through Peachjar, but then that, for approval, all that information would come to us, and we are the ones that actually send it out to the families. We would use our policy. We'd need to update our procedure a little bit as we're moving forward. But our current policy is the same structure that we would use for approving our, our flyers for families. Questions?
Do they get charged if you say no?
I don't think so. No, you have to post for, yeah.
Sounds great. So it's a great way to, you know, improve their reliability of getting to parents or getting to members.
What's that, Neil, sir?
The digital recycle bin. You know, junk pile.
Being overwhelmed with community interest and sending stuff out.
No, not at all. We've talked to other school districts that are using it, and they say nothing but good things about it, and very manageable. Probably we are more overwhelmed by having to do it all on paper. It gets, that gets more overwhelming than if we start to do it in this format.
And it's also more, more cost effective for our community.
Oh, sure.
It's a third or less of the cost to disseminate information to everybody than it was prior, or is now. Actually more affordable.
This works pretty good for everybody except for the post office. Digital flyers, things that go out like, you know, it costs hundreds of dollars to send flyers out, information.
Yes, a family.
Does not want to receive this information can unsubscribe themselves from the service.
And then they can re-subscribe if they decide they want to.
Yeah, so it's as easy as a click of the button and a click of the button.
And that's all done, well, the unsubscribe is done from the emails they would get, the subscribe would be done from our webpage.
Is there any fees associated with this for the parents at all?
Not for parents, no. As a district, we pay.
It's just a one time fee.
Forever.
Yep.
And, and that's, what was it?
Five hundred dollars per school. Twenty five hundred dollar fee to set everything up and get it all in motion, and then we never pay again.
After it's set up, it's set up.
What's the twelve fifty per school and startup kit?
That's for a outside organization like the soccer team.
Okay.
That wants to.
Send it to us.
Yes.
For us to distribute.
Right. And we don't get the twelve fifty, that goes to Peach, Peachjar. But they would have a Peachjar before we even saw the flyer that says that they would like to send it out.
Okay.
That's a great deal for them. I mean, they're thinking about trying to print out a couple hundred flyers and get them, get them distributed, trying to get them in kids' backpacks to take home. When they can just.
Try fourteen hundred.
Yeah.
Paper and, is it working now?
No, it's not operational. We will let you know when it is.
Are we using anything like this at this time?
Not at this point. Nope, this will be the first time.
Everything is just still paper generated, or we are sending emails to parents.
We send emails, yeah, but.
I get emails every day.
Yep.
Well, it's good though, because that's the only way I know what's going on.
I like it. It's great.
All right.
Something we need to vote on, five hundred dollars?
It's information for you, so you know that we're looking at this for a communication man, or tool.
So this is something that's gonna come to the board later?
What's that?
So it's something that's gonna come to the board later for us to vote on, or is this just something you're gonna incorporate?
Just communication tool that we'll be using, and I wanted to make sure you knew about it.
I like it.
Okay, so if you have questions, if you think of anything, let me know. The next thing is Scatter Creek. Just want to remind everybody that the Scatter Creek Food Drive is taking place now, Saturday, November twelfth. They are collecting food. They're stuffing the bus with food. And so encourage you to go out and contribute some food. So that, this is the big conversation, competition, which I'm waiting to see, right, how this goes. But Rockchester versus Tenino, and I hear Rockchester won last year, based on the way we counted the food. So. So it, we need to make sure we're out there supporting. If you're driving by the middle school on Saturday, make sure you drop off some food. And then my final reminder for you is just tomorrow, we have our Veterans Day assemblies at all the different schools. So invite, we invite you out there and hope that you can attend. That shouldn't be there. Oh, that's our next, that's our policy, so.
Good, great. Okay, no, nothing in the old business, so moving on to new business, first reading policies. We have three policies. Can you give them a brief?
I can give you a brief one, yep. So fourteen hundred, this is meeting conduct in order of business and forums. It's about how are we structuring our meetings, emergency meetings, and our public attendance and comment. This is, the updates are based on House Bill, two House bills, and you see them there, sixteen thirty and thirteen twenty nine. The main updates are a few syntax corrections, clarification of what, what is a remote meeting, and what do we need to have in place for those meetings to take place? It also speaks to guidelines for emergency meetings, and it updated in there. So if we do have another pandemic, what, what do we need to follow? If we have a flood and we can't get here, and we had a meeting scheduled, this outlines the guidelines for those emergency meetings when we wouldn't be able to come together. And then the final one is some updates around the process for public comment.
Did you find out about the voting?
No, not yet.
Okay.
He was asking about needing to have a voice when we vote if somebody's not in the room with us. So we'll check on that.
Okay.
One more time, what's that? So, so what it is, is so like when I'm not there or somebody else, mostly me, because when I have to work, I come in from work, and so if we vote, the, the other night, I was having problems. I couldn't, couldn't speak or anything like that, so I was typing everything.
Yeah.
I, and he was reading it.
Yes, he was.
Okay, and so, so what we're trying to figure out, is that legal?
Should be if you're launching, yeah.
Or is it recorded? So we have.
Yeah, we do have.
It is recorded, but so, but.
Your chat would be recorded as well. Yeah, that, that might be another step.
I wondered about that, yes.
Makes sense, yeah. It should be, it would be.
Yeah, we're checking into it to make sure that we're doing it right and figuring out. We're also working to make, to see if we can set it up, so he's able to make sure we can hear him, because he's on.
Yeah, he's, Justin's gonna have to come over one day and, we'll do like a trial run or something like that to figure out why, why I'm having so many, you know, issues up there.
I guess the key would be if we, if we have limited.
An eighth grader will figure it out for you.
It could be, yeah.
I, I had similar problems. There's a mute button that I get no on my H P device. Eighth grader figured it out. I've been figuring it out for two months, trying to figure out how to do it. Automatic mute.
It could be it.
Something silly like that.
So, so we want to make sure we have clarity on that, especially if we only have enough members for a quorum, so we only have three members. Counting on, counting on Thomas's remote, or if it's a, you know, they contested it, it's three to two, but Thomas is remote. Otherwise, I think we're, we've been in good shape, but we've had a couple times where we've, they had three voting members, and we needed that for a quorum.
Our next one is Policy twenty twenty, which is course design and adoption of instructional materials. This one is about the curriculum adoption process. Aligns to our, our practice and the way that we're currently doing that. But the reason for the change is, change is we just want to make sure we're aligning our practice to the actual policy. And Justin looked at this, the primary changes that is, that is in here is just, in the policy part, is noting that when a public person, or somebody from the public comes in and wants to see curriculums, that we will make sure it's available upon request. Our format for our curriculums keeps changing. Sometimes it's in a paper format, sometimes it's online. Who knows what, what it might look like in years to come? So we just want to be very clear that regardless of the format that the curriculum is in, we will make it available to the public upon request. And then the procedure is the next one, so that's twenty twenty procedure. The big changes in that one is that we added an elementary and a secondary parent to the district curriculum committee, the D C C. And then clarified the term that each of the members of those committees will be on the committees. So we did not have an elementary, we didn't have any parents on that committee before, so this will now put a parent on them. And this is the, this is the adoption committee that takes place before we bring a recommendation to the board. And our final policy is the policy thirty. And our final policy is the policy thirty one forty one for non-resident students. What it's about, it's about how do we accept non-resident students into our district? What's the process that they go through? The reason for the revision is we just had some updates to make to it. Shauna's really taken a lead on a lot of this work right now. So she provided some input into this one. The primary updates are around transportation. So clarifying that a student who is a non-resident doesn't automatically get transportation. In fact, they're told that they're going to need to provide their own transportation, but we will look at it if there is space available on the bus, if we are, if there can get to a bus route and have somewhere, you know, a parent, a grandparent or a daycare or something that within the district that is on a bus route, we would certainly look at providing them transportation as long as it's on the route and there's space. The other is that there's, it speaks to contract language and contract being that we would sign a contract with our, with our kids and we are not signing a contract with all of our kids. So that's taken out of there. And then the procedure. Oh, but it does state that if we do need a contract, because let's say we're taking a child and that's, has an attendance problem with them, we would want to write a contract. And so it states that if we do need to write a contract, that they do need to adhere to it. And then finally, the procedure for thirty one forty one. This, the procedure is no longer recommended by WASDA. And so we did completely delete the procedures. They were very dated and they were not what we were currently doing as we accepted non-resident students into the district. So our, our actions are very well outlined in the policy as to how we're taking care of them.
Jennifer, is this a change? I know there are other districts that do go take buses out of district to bring kids into their district. Have we done that? Now we're stopping or we just haven't done it?
No, we haven't done that. With the exception of maybe a McKinney mental student.
Foster.
Or foster care.
Foster care and, and students in the McKinney mental program have a right to school of origin transportation.
Okay.
So you will still see buses crossing in, in all kinds of directions, but it has never been practiced to transport students who choice into your school district.
Okay.
But it is uncommon for a choice student to say, hey, where can we meet the bus? And in this guidance, we're saying we're happy to help you as long as we don't incur a burden or a cost to the district because to choice in, you are accepting responsibility.
That's our policies.
Question, do we have any kids from out of our area that go to Heart? Are they involved with any sort of transportation?
I, there is a student that I reimburse. That's program eligible. And so we have supports for students in any program in our district from the little teeny tiny to heart high school.
Just don't want anything to be sort of extra challenging to add to their opportunities to grow and learn here.
Yeah.
Okay, so this first reading, please read through it over the next week or two. Questions, please.
Jennifer. Yep.
Clarified, expect to see him in the consent agenda for our next meeting. All right, next item is out of state travel. This is Joey Easley, mission to travel to New Orleans for plain talk about literacy and learning training program.
She's the one that's doing our science of reading training and this is another really good opportunity for her to learn about basically how to teach reading to our kids and she'll be taking, bringing the information back and using what she learns to work with our teachers and help them learn.
Train the trainer.
Yep, exactly.
Now, that's what I was going to ask about, is this like training. When is this supposed to occur?
This is in March. I think it's right around the first, there it is, the eighth through the tenth of March.
It's out of hurricane season?
Not during Mardi Gras either. When I read this and I looked at the dates, we discussed it and then I had to Google to find out when Mardi Gras was. That's just how my mind works. You go into New Orleans at that time of year? Sorry.
All right, so. Any questions, comments? Of travel?
Lovely.
Not, I make a motion to approve the travel. Do we easily attend the plain talk about literacy and learning training? Make it a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You vote. All right, travel is approved. This brings us to our final opportunity for public input. Nobody signed up? Any online? Nobody's online?
We have one person online.
You're pretty sure about that?
Oh, yeah.
Don't want to get thirty seconds?
Do you have anything else to say?
You're already buying, don't.
I take Krispy Kreme.
All right. We are adjourned.